All right, good evening. It's after 7:00 PM. It's a regularly scheduled meeting, Worcester City Council, held this evening, Monday, March 3rd, 2025. We are here live in council chambers, and we are also livestreamed on YouTube. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be March 17th of 2025.
St. Patrick's Day?
Yes, St. Patrick's Day. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on our attendance.
Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and we were aware that Mr. Abernathy was not going to be available this evening to attend, and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Husey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have no petitions or communications from the public. We have no committee reports or public hearings, and for the general public, usually you're aware that usually the communications from the mayor administration, we would have already done that, but we have moved him to a little further back in the meeting for a couple of different reasons. So with that, we'll move right into unfinished business, which at this point, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-02, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with certain property owners for the purpose of facilitating the annexation and extension of utility services to those properties and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to state first that I don't believe this has been an issue in the past, and it hasn't happened before, but I would like to ask the administration, moving forward, that we're sure to communicate all agenda items with council. I feel it's best practice to communication from you to us, from the requesting manager, and that keeps the public informed and us informed. So with that, if there aren't any questions on this ordinance, I would like to motion to move it to the third and final reading.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Malta. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
So if I say no, I can have Mr. Long come back again?
No, you might be outvoted.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Husey.
We could just invite him.
Okay. So with that, do you have a?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Husey.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. You're all set.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you.
But you're welcome to come back any.
Scott, I can come back for pleasure too.
Just come back to St. Patrick's Day. St. Patrick's Day will be a good day to come back.
Well, especially if Scott's on the hot seat. Thank you, everybody.
You bet.
Thanks very much for being here.
All right. Next item is new business, which we have none. So we'll move right into the next portion, which is communications from the mayor administration. So, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it, please counsel, I'll do this in two parts. The first, my traditional comments, and then I'll go move into the more formal state of the city. First of all, as council is already aware, last Tuesday, Chief Fisher was flown to OSU Medical Center after having an aneurysm. He was in serious condition for quite a while, and the first 24 hours were a very anxious time for all of us. Last Wednesday, Matt had a surgical procedure to treat the aneurysm and has been making progress since then. As Assistant Chief Rotolak has described it, Chief Fisher is having small victories every day, and for that, we can all be thankful. That being said, he has a long road to go in his recovery, but I feel confident in saying that Matt will see this as just another challenge to be met and will pursue his recovery with the dedication and passion with which we are all familiar. Chief Fisher's family has been with him throughout this ordeal, in addition to Matt himself. We need to keep them in our prayers. There's been an outpouring of support from the community, and Matt's wife is very appreciative of that. Of course, as Scott has pointed out, Chief Fisher is going to be very uncomfortable with all the attention he is receiving over the last week and for the weeks to come, but he is just going to have to learn to live with that because there's no way around that at this point, and I don't think anybody's going to apologize for that either. We've had a lot of people asking how they can help, and I apologize. I'm just chugging down cough drops, and not as a sign of disrespect, but because I don't want to hack over everybody, but we've had a lot of people asking how they can help. Scott's wife is working on organizing that effort, and I expect that we all have something to share on that front this week. Special mention needs to be made of the work done by Scott and the other members of the Worcester Police Department over the course of the last week. In addition to taking on Matt's responsibilities, Scott and his wife have made numerous trips to Columbus to support Matt and his family, and this has certainly taken an emotional toll on everyone involved. I want counsel and the community to know that Joel has been working with Scott and the rest of the Worcester Police Department for the continuation of operation in Matt's absence. Safety services will continue without interruption while we support Matt and his family in their Scott's here, and again, thanks for all he's done, both personally and in his professional role over the course of the last week. So going on to more typical run-of-the-mill business. Joel is out sick, as you know, and he sent out a report last Friday. I don't know that there's anything in there that you might have questions on, but Phil's happy to try to answer those if you do. As far as the activity of the last two weeks, on the 19th, we had a, the bimonthly managers' meeting in these offices with all the city managers. That same day after, at the end of the business day, Wayne Economic Development Council put together a tour of the new triway facilities, and they included the Main Street and Chamber of Commerce boards as that tour, and again, I participated, and the more I see of it, the more impressed I am with that facility. On the 20th, we had the first of this year's quarterly meetings with Wayne County Commissioners, and that was really the first time that we had to go over with them in detail the drawings of the peanut, which we had shared with council just previously. Before that, we had shared with them a general concept plan, but they're still on board with what we are proposing. On the 21st, we had Fiesta Friday at Freelance Chalet, which is our employee recognition luncheon, and I know a number of council members were able to attend and appreciate you doing that. On the 24th, I did the State of the City presentation that you're about to enjoy here for Rotary. For those of you that want more of that and missed the Rotary presentation or the Quanis presentation, this Thursday, I'm going to Lions Club. It'll be your last chance, so I'm sure tickets are available. On the 25th, we had a WarCog meeting, and ironically, that was the day Matt had his incident, and I sat next to him and had no clue that there was something in the wind. Lucas is aware of this, but we've had some concerns about what fallout there might be from the fall elections with regards to that group, and the good news is that the concerns we had at this point appear to me may be unfounded. That person that ran out of county on a strong anti-WarCog platform has kind of backed down now that he got familiar with it, so knock on wood, hopefully that's not going to be an issue. Last Wednesday, the hospital had their monthly board meeting, and their board unanimously passed a resolution requesting that the city move forward with plans for what we've kind of been known as the Kidney Roundabout, which would be at Bell, Cleveland Road, and Elm Street, as well as the intersections coming off the hospital parking lot. And that's well down the road. And we talked about the peanut as being 2027. That would be even beyond that, so we're in the very, very preliminary stages of that. But it's an item for future discussion, is, you know, at what point does council get involved in that? You know, right now is too soon because there's, there's nothing to tell you other than what it, you've pretty much heard all the details about the kidney at this point that's there. And then 27th, the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, I know a number of you again were there at that event. Always a nice event, and especially nice when some of our own get recognized. Last year, we had Ashley Rehark get recognized. This year, Tony Lemons was recognized. He won the Leadership Worcester Distinguished Alumni Award. And then this morning, the Health District Advisory Board met at the county building, and I attended, and I brought back for you their handout from that meeting. It's got a lot of fun facts about the state of health in Wayne County. One thing I had looking ahead, in addition to the Lions Club meeting, on the 11th, we're swearing in new police officers. I know some of you have gone to that event in the past. I assume you're certainly welcome to attend this one, and Amy, I don't know if that's on your agenda, but make sure we get invitations out to council and make sure that that happens. But I'm not sure the time, but it's on the 11th in the afternoon. Two final things I wanted to share. During the course of the last two weeks, I had two interactions with elected officials from other communities that I thought were worth passing along. The first was with a newly-elected official from a county seat in a neighboring county who grew up in Worcester and happened to graduate from Worcester High School just a few years behind me. He was in town and had nothing but positive things to say about our community, and we were really talking about how they could adopt some of the programs we've had in the community and their, I don't want to name the community, but they thought it would help in where they're at. The second thing, we had a meeting with a group from Millersburg, and they are dealing with some issues that Worcester has faced in the past, most notably a mobile home park that's causing them all kinds of headaches with unpaid water bills, and they came to the city building for a meeting with Jonathan to review how we'd handled that issue and some other in the past. And again, they are very appreciative of Jonathan's expertise and with our willingness to share that expertise with them. So, you know, not only is there a reason for us to be proud of the work that we're doing, but other communities are recognizing that as well. So with that, I will now move to the formal state of the city, and I want to apologize in advance to this. To some extent, I'll be speaking a little bit beneath you, but you got to remember that this is the presentation that goes on the website, so I'm talking to people that haven't sat through all this stuff for the last year. And the second piece I would say is that, to the extent I'm repetitive of things we've said before, I don't know that that's necessarily a bad sign. I think we're fairly consistent in our message about what the goals of our administration are and what we're trying to do move forward, and I think we've tried very hard to be transparent in that, so I'll be stunned if you hear anything over the course of the next 20 minutes or so that you say, boy, I didn't see that coming, so. Amy assured me that I couldn't screw this up, we'll see. So first of all, let's talk a little bit about 2024 in review. For starters, we had 19 major projects awarded in the year, almost all of which were in the pipeline before I took office, and for many of you on council were in the pipeline before you took office as well. Among the major projects completed were Fire Station Number One, which I believe be a facility worthy of our firefighters, and I'm not sure I can say that about the facility replaced. Six new pickleball courts were built in Pimpson's Run Park, thanks to generous donation from the Jack Miller family. We completed Oak Hill and Milltown improvements. This included roundabouts at Oak Hill and Oldman and Oak Hill and Milltown. I will acknowledge that the neighbors adjacent to that property had to put up with a lot of inconvenience during the period of construction, but since it's opened, I've had some of those same neighbors come up to me and tell me how great the intersections are, and as practical matter, all I've heard are compliments, except for some people who are opposed to roundabouts just as a matter of principle, and they're out there. We also completed the Streetscape on West Derby Street and completed Butterfly Alley Project, which is the first project towards our proposed arts district development. This is a part that gets repetitive because even while I campaigned two years ago, these were the things I was talking about. These are the things that are part of last year's presentation. These are probably going to be the things that are part of next year's presentation. And again, no apologies for that. These aren't things we're going to knock off right away that you can check off and say, done. These are things we're going to keep hammering at. The first is strategic and intentional growth. Second is to facilitate housing development. I get questions from the community at times, and you probably all do as well. When is the city going to build some housing for, you know, for lower income, economically disadvantaged? And, you know, the reality is, we don't build housing. What we can do is create situations that encourage private development in housing. And finally, promote economic prosperity, especially in older residential neighborhoods. The last two might seem to be variations on the same theme when it comes to housing, and to an extent, that is true, but the first is looking at housing from the perspective of employers, homeowners, and those seeking to become homeowners. We want to increase the availability of housing, which in turn should make it more affordable. The last one is looking at housing from a neighborhood and community standpoint. We have areas in the city of Worcester where property values are not keeping up with inflation. That is a recipe for disaster in those areas and really for the larger community as a whole. Let's take a little bit of a deeper dive on these. The strategic and intentional growth means not just growth for the sake of growth, but using tax incentives where warranted and not as an entitlement. Our goal is to attract basic sector employers and offering full-time employment with benefits. And as an example, the 2024 tax incentive we provided to Worcester Brush when they're looking to expand allowed them to bring Welsh Packaging into their facility as part of that project. So not only did allow Worcester Brush to keep their expansion in town, but also opened up an opportunity for Welsh Packaging to come to town as well. We have several projects in life for 2025, some of which council is aware of, which in turn is going to present another challenge because we are fast approaching the time when we may have used up all of our area for expansion of industrial sites, and the question's going to be, the next time a local employer wants to expand and they want to stay in town, where are we pointing? So again, that'll be a challenge moving forward. Housing. Again, we spent a lot of time talking in housing, and there's a good reason for that. I want to direct your attention to the chart in the lower, or the graph in the lower right-hand corner at first. This shows the problem we're facing locally, and reflects housing starts over the last 15 years in Worcester. And I did, I passed around an article I pulled out of the Daily Record. It was a national article that just got included a couple of weeks ago, and I thought, you know, it's kind of spot on, and if you've read much about the housing issue in the country, there's a reason it's a nationwide issue. A lot of the issues that led into it are national things, the housing, the financial prices of 2008, COVID, those types of things. This graph really undersells the problem because this only reflects new units that were built. It doesn't reflect net change in units. So every year during that period, we have houses going out of service, you know, probably every week, or you have a house that there's a fire, or it's just demoed because it can't be kept up. So this, again, doesn't show the net change in housing, just shows the increase in housing The other thing that plays into this, because it doesn't get talked about much, is 50 years ago, the average household size in Worcester, and this is consistent around the country, was over three people per household. We're now down, I think the last census figure was 2.14 people per household in Worcester. So just to simplify the math, if you say, okay, with 30,000 people, three people a household means you need 10,000 units. You change that number to two people a household, you're looking at 15,000 units. We haven't built, when that number went from three to two, we did not build 5,000 new units. So that's a little bit of it in a nutshell. We do think we're finally getting some traction on this problem, though. With 342 units built or under construction, 181 units approved to start construction, and roughly 400 units proposed for development, and that doesn't count in the orange areas, which are just targeted as, or identified as areas that are possible for future development with utilities available, which, again, the availability of utilities is one of the things that's crucial to making housing a realistic option for those areas. And it's one of the things that really opened up that area around the Tiff up on Oak Hill. Next thing we've done is we've formed a steering committee of community members, including development professionals, that met throughout 2024 to look into the question of how best to modify the current zoning code to address changing community needs, changing demographics, and changing community preferences. And we expect that committee to, and I know some of the council members are on that committee, to come through with a proposal in the next few months that will go to the planning commission first for review and eventually to council. We expect them to recommend changes in the zoning code throughout every zoning classification, but we also expect that the biggest impact will be in the RT district. And for those of you that have not had a chance to do it, Joel did a podcast a week or two weeks ago that's up now, and he does a good job of going into depth on this. I won't, I'll just refer you to that and recommend it to you because he talks quite a bit about some of the challenges that our older neighborhoods are facing with the deteriorating housing stock. But these older neighborhoods are areas where we actually saw property values decrease in some cases in the last decade, where everywhere else, property values were seeing kind of historic rises. So that may seem like a good time, or excuse me, a good thing when the tax bills come out, but overall, it is not a good thing. Because of the topography, Worcester was always going to grow north and east, and that's certainly been the case from the very beginning, but this has been exacerbated in the last few decades due to a reduction in available housing units and population in some of those towns. As a result, we've seen a hollowing out of some of these older residential neighborhoods, and way too much of the housing in some of those older neighborhoods is considered housing of last resort. And again, that is, there needs to be housing of last resort. Having it concentrated in certain neighborhoods is not a good thing. So this might be the cornerstone question, and again, I know this group is familiar with what's going on at Cornerstone and what could be going on with Cornerstone. I firmly have the belief that Cornerstone, operating as a neighborhood school, has helped contribute to this problem, and I commend the Worcester City School District and the Board of Education for taking the steps to no longer make Cornerstone a neighborhood school. If you're familiar with the bond issue, if the bond issue passes, they will move off that site entirely in about 2028, 2029, I believe. If it fails, Cornerstone will then no longer be a neighborhood school, but will be a district-wide grade three, grade four building. In either case, that is going to help serve the Cornerstone community. For starters, it will help the families that are in that neighborhood. The last report card shows Cornerstone having a 77.6% economically disadvantaged population, which is a 9% leap from the previous year. This is over 20% higher than any other school in the Worcester district, and over 25% higher than any other school building in the county. This isn't a new issue in Worcester. We faced this before. At the time the Lincoln Way Building was closed, they had an economically disadvantaged rate of over 90%. And the reason I think this is a problem is that the academic research is conclusive that a student coming out of poverty has a better chance of academic success if he is mainstreaming with the general school population. So that's one of the big proponents of grade-level school buildings, which is what you see districts moving towards. In addition, this change is going to help the neighborhoods themselves that are currently served by Cornerstone. Again, I think everybody knows that Cornerstone is the oldest building in Houston, our district. It's probably closing into one of the older buildings in Houston State. For what it's worth, if you're keeping score at home, Worcester now has not only the oldest building in the county, but the second oldest, the third oldest, the fourth oldest, fifth oldest, and the sixth oldest, so you get the picture. But currently, having that serve as a neighborhood school has a negative impact on the residential property values in that area. It indirectly threatens the commercial property values, and having a school with the highest percentage of students living in poverty at the south end of town really accelerates the transfer of students, either families and students north and east, and also has the highest transfer rate in the district to either other schools within the district, to other public schools in other districts, or to private schools. So going back, if the bond issue should pass, at that point and when the school is ready to move off of that, and that'll take several years to happen, the north part of that property, which is largely vacant, will revert to the city of Worcester because that was the terms under which the property was transferred from the city to the school, excuse me, 75 years or so ago. The school is still on the south part of the property, which has the buildings on it. At that point, we'll almost be in a partnership with the schools on how to dispose of that property best. We've talked quite a bit to the schools at this point, and it seems like the best way to go about repurposing that site is through Worcester Growth. This has been done successfully in the past. Worcester Growth redeveloped the Horn Nursing Home site on Market Street, as well as the Freelance Department Store site. And if you're wondering about this picture and trying to decipher this picture, trying to figure out what stays and what goes, you can't tell. It is intentionally vague, so you can imagine that with all the buildings staying or all of them going. It's just one example of types of uses that could be made of that property, and all I'm telling you on behalf of Worcester Growth is, we're determined to make sure that whatever happens to that site, it's not only an asset to the neighborhood, but also to the community as a whole. It could be a mixture of public uses, it could be including private residences, it could be all one or all the other. Time will tell, but we'll make sure it's used in a productive manner. Also want to address a rumor that's apparently out there that says there is a handshake deal in place in some background that there's already an agreement as to what's going to happen with this building or that site, and that is absolutely untrue. Everything is on the table. There has been interest from a number of groups in the community about, hey, we think we can, you know, locate such and such there, and that's great. More interest, the better. We'll have a better competition of ideas there, but there is nothing predetermined about what's going to happen with the site or with the buildings on that site. The other thing we have going downtown is the Arts District, which, again, I touched on the Butterfly Alley Project a little earlier, and we now have our anchor with the Lyric Theater Project. This is another opportunity to revitalize one of our older neighborhoods that probably could use a little TLC in some areas. Want to take a little bit of a deeper dive on the housing, and again, I shared with you that article from the Daily Record, which is in and of itself repetitive of much the other literature you're going to find on the housing issue facing really every community in our country. The problem has been described by some as a matter of affordability and by others as a matter of availability. I would argue that those two issues are one and the same, a basic matter of supply and demand. If we can increase the supply, we can bring down the cost on all units. And again, going to causation, and there's kind of a little bit of an enigma here because, you know, statewide and countywide, our projections for population are pretty flat. In fact, the Department of Development has Wayne County's population falling by 8% over the next 25 years, which we'll see. But what we do know is that baby boomers, of which I am a proud member, are much to blame for this. We're determined to live forever. Many of us have decided that we don't want to work forever, but we're not going to give up our houses, and that surely adds to this. But we also want lots of healthcare, so as a group, we're in the process of simultaneously disrupting the housing market, the workforce, and the healthcare industry. We've also touched on the changing demographics. Not too long ago, certainly within my lifetime, the average house, there were about 50% of the households in Worcester had children. That number is now down to under 25%. The 2008 financial crisis we mentioned, COVID, broken immigration system, which greatly affects the workforce. affects the workforce, not only in construction, but also agriculture, nimbyism, I think that's a phrase you're probably all familiar with, that really allows a vocal minority to dictate development policy for an entire community, and finally outdated zoning codes. Our solution involves a two-pronged approach. We want to revitalize existing residential neighborhoods using revisions to the zoning code to encourage investment in older neighborhoods. Again, this is going to reflect changing community demographics, changing consumer demand, aging housing stock. And a note on that, according to Jonathan's last report, 17% of our housing dates to 1939 or earlier. So it's closing in on us. Century homes, which used to be a big thing, now is going to be increasingly common as we go forward. And finally, an existing zoning code that actually disincentivizes investment in older residential neighborhoods. The other piece is strategic growth around the edges of the city. This requires annexation. Again, we always annex only on a voluntary basis. I would think the exception would probably be going back to the 80s with the Madisonburg annexation. I think some of the people brought in that came in kicking and screaming, but beyond that, in recent years, it's always been a voluntary matter. And again, for those, and you'll hear this, that preach farmland preservation, farmland preservation, annexation is the way to make that happen. It allows for denser housing that's more sustainable, and it promotes more farmland for farmers. The housing growth will require infrastructure improvements, and we've taken advantage of TIF funding, tax increment financing, to make this happen. Traditionally, the improvements would need to be paid for out of the general fund or financed by bonds, which themselves would have to be repaid out of the general funds. For decades, a lack of improvements was a barrier to development at the north end of Oak Hill, and was also the reason why a septic truck had to be called every Worcester High School football game to handle the crowd. As a result of the improvements paid for to date through this TIF, we are now going to see an additional 400 new housing units in that TIF district. And the tax revenues generated by that new investment will turn, pay not only for the infrastructure improvements, but will then use to help support the schools for the life of those improvements. We know it's kind of a chicken and egg type of thing. We put in the improvements, it allows the housing to take place, which again, puts more demand on the infrastructure. It's a symbiotic relationship there. And this, you know, this is why we improved Oak Hill, it's why we improved Milltown, it's why we put in those two roundabouts. And this is going to lead to our favorite topic, the peanut. This has been an intersection which has been a source of concern for decades, and which is only going to get worse in the next few years to the extent that instead of just the current daily delays, the situation will better be described as a choke point. There isn't really much question that something needs to be done for that intersection. The real questions are what type of improvement to make and when to make it. In terms of how to improve the traffic flow, there have been a number of suggestions that were rejected, either because they were impractical or because they wouldn't noticeably improve the traffic flow or both. Included among them was adjusting the intersection to align the east end of Oldman Road and the west end of Winkler Drive, either by moving one or the other or by moving both. Another idea was to turn the west end of Winkler Drive into a cul-de-sac to force all the traffic that now put up Winkler to find other access to Burbank Road. More recently, there is a proposal to turn Oldman Road into a one-way road. And another is to turn Burbank into three lanes, all the way from Highland to the bypass. We believe with all due respect, that elongated roundabout is a far superior solution to any of those alternatives, and as currently proposed, it will have the least impact possible upon the neighboring property owners. So that just leaves the question of when. No question that the construction of this roundabout or any other improvement at that intersection will be disruptive to the neighbors. But the longer we wait, the more disruptive it's going to be. Because we know that the traffic levels in that are going to rise because of the additional construction we know that's going to take place in that area, both residential and commercial. This will require a smaller amount of ride away from some of the neighboring owners. But the vast majority of that land will come out of land now owned by the county. And the Wayne County Commissioners have been extremely cooperative in making that available to us in order that we can minimize the impact on the neighboring landowners. And again, the risk of being repetitive on this thing, it is a mistake to think that all future county commissioners will all have the same attitude towards that type of movement. And finally, the cost of this property is only going to increase the longer we delay. For all those reasons, I believe that now is the time to move forward with that project. Transportation. This, I don't think was on our state of the city at all last year. This was not on my radar, but it is something we spent a lot of time about. When I say we, administration, council, certainly Mr. White. More to come in 2025 and beyond. By way of background, not so much for council, but for anybody else listening, Wayne County participated in the SADA program administered by Stark County up until last fall. That program went away, and we've been scrambling ever since to fill the vacuum. Without going into any detail on the short-term solutions, long-term, the city of Worcester is starting up a public transit system that will be heavily reliant on state and federal funding to maintain operations. Kevin has been hired to run that, and though initially the program will be pretty much limited to Worcester, the plan is to eventually expand that so that it will be a county-wide system. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. I just want to say that I think we accomplished quite a bit in 2024. And when I say we, I mean, administration with council support. We have an opportunity to build on that in 2025. Just a quick rundown of what's on the slate this coming year. We have a new pool coming in at Christmas Run. We have additional housing units that will be in place. We are looking to make revisions to our zoning code, and again, that'll be here sooner rather than later. We're looking to annex some additional territory for future housing needs. And as I touched on before, we've got to explore additional areas for industrial expansion if and when that opportunity comes. We don't want to have somebody come to us and then say, oh geez, let's go find a place. We want to have something set aside that we know is available for the right usage. We need to implement and expand the transportation system. And again, that's not a one-year project, but that'll be ongoing. And finally, we need to continue to improve the infrastructure for the quality of life for our citizens. And with that, I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to the city of Worcester. Be happy to take any questions, but I may have exhausted you already, so we'll go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question related to the zoning. How, I know one of the things that's come up recently, matter of fact, in the legislation that we passed this evening, I know there was some discussion with the civil engineer on that site about a flag-shaped lot, which evidently seemed to, excuse the pun, flagged some issues with zoning on that, which then seemed to draw a little bit of additional time. And so I'm just curious, is that one of the, is that an item that at this point is going to be dealt with, with this new code?
You know, I can't tell you that. I'm not, you know, I'm not part of the committee that's meant to discuss those. Me, Barb, or someone else can. That's not one of the hot button topics, I think, are the things that the zoning code was talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we did have a hot button.
Well, I mean, there's a specific reason I'm asking the question, because I know at this point, there's potential, there's potential on some housing that at this point is going to unfortunately lean heavy on flag-shaped lots. And so consequently, if this is going to be a no-go with planning, then it doesn't make any sense for that particular developer to spin their wheels if it's going to be something that is going to be cut off at the knees immediately.
I know Joel and Vince have been working quite heavily, trying to compile this all into a single, and I'm not sure if Phil's been involved in it either, excuse me, but they've been working on compiling all the proposals into a single package that we can bring to council approval. I've not been involved in that process at all. I'm involved in general concepts, but as far as details, I have no idea. Joel or Vince could answer that question for you. And of course, you know, we've talked about this before, whatever is in that, those changes are a request from the administration, it's a proposal. So council will ultimately decide, it'll go to the planning commission, planning commission is going to act on that and make a recommendation. But ultimately, it's council's legislation to adopt to decide, you know, whether flag lots are allowed or not.
Right. Well, yeah, I just had to ask some questions because I didn't want you to.
It was a good question.
I didn't want, I didn't want you to have to sit down without having at least one stupid question.
I appreciate that. I appreciate I was able to duck it. But I will say, I absolutely will say that Vince, or I am sure Vince and Joel will be interested in that.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
What is the projected timeline for when will the voting on receiving materials be? Do you have an idea?
So Phil can jump in and say, but again, you'd have to factor in the planning commission review, so.
I believe they finalized a lot of the comments with the consultant, and they're working on getting that next commission, steering committee, actually, I would call it, steering committee group together. And then once everything goes smoothly, then move it on to planning commission, then council after that, so.
I would think with all that, that's certainly not going to be something we do in one reading.
Yeah. I would probably closer to the end of the year, just because we haven't, the committee hasn't been seen the final presentation from the marketing or the group that's doing, it's not a marketing group, but the group that's assisting, and then it has to go through planning, and then it has to come back here. So I would imagine probably not till we come back from summer break.
I was going to say at the earliest, right before break. That may be overly optimistic, so maybe Barb should probably be more accurate on that being.
Or you may, you know, summer break to review.
Which is, you know, when you can have the budget, I'm like, it might as well be written in Chinese, but math is not my forte, but this sort of thing, I can wrap my brain around myself. If you'd like to scrutinize it a little bit more.
And unlike the budget, where, I mean, you are facing a deadline to get that done. I've been received before, and you are, and this one, we're not, our only deadlines is internal. We think changes need to be made. We're going to recommend a bunch to you through this process. And again, I have no idea what's in there, whether council takes some of it, all of it, none of it. That's going to be council's decision. All we can do is propose it.
At this point, I assume that's the point where the committee is willing to accept some of it, all of it, or none of it, so there'll be a lot.
So yeah, I have Barb, and Lucas is on the committee, too. I don't know if you are or not, but I know Barb and Lucas are, and I think they'll attest that I show up, I welcome everybody, then I say, have fun, and I leave, and I come back again and say, thank you. And that's about as far into the weeds as I am as far as the details of the changes. Anything else? Good, thank you for your time. And again, I don't mean to, try to keep in mind that this is for people that have not had to hear about a TIF or hear about all these things, so I said that with mind. Again, I hope I didn't insult your intelligence more so than I usually do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to miscellaneous, which at this point, we have one individual to sign up. So Mr. Barnett, if you want to.
Two minutes isn't much time. There's a lot of subjects I got to talk about. Hopefully, in the next work session, they will let the public talk. I want to know, which one of you bought a house that wants to lose money on? It is up that. With that roundabout there, in my driveway, the neighbor's house, and the other neighbor's house, and the other neighbor's house, both lose their property value. In other states, the city talks with the citizens, and they agree to bring an arbitrator in and agree on a price that would be fair to equal out their loss on their property. You know what we got? We got a letter. So this is what we're going to do. That's all I got to say, because I got a lot more to say. But I want to mention also, Mayor, on, you talked about doing May 27th, or May of 2027? What about the fireworks show? Someone asked me about that. You want to give that up? Folks, I'm just, I'm not going away. And if I get more than two minutes to talk, fifteen and a half hour, I can tell you some stories, okay? Thank you for your time and trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
All right. I guess we'll start with Mr. Fuzay this evening. Any additional miscellaneous comments you have?
Just thoughts and prayers to Chief Fisher, wish for a speedy recovery. If my brother in North Ridgeville is watching, happy birthday, and we'll see everybody on St. Patty's Day. I think the mayor's bringing some green beer, right?
I hope so.
Afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Ms. Knappich.
Thanks very much. I want to also send my best wishes and God bless Chief Fisher, his personal family, and the Worcester family. I know everybody is really worried about him, and we keep them in our prayers. Want to send out a congratulations to Tony Lemon on his award of outstanding alumni for leadership Worcester. Unfortunately, work prevented me from being at the chamber meeting Thursday night. I was hoping to be able to tell him congratulations in person, and I think those are the things that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I've really enjoyed getting to know Chief Fisher over the last year since I've been on council. And so certainly thinking of him as he's recovering, and we'll be praying for him through that time. And that's it for me.
Ms. Warden.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that we're pulling for Chief Fisher here and, you know, definitely have him in our thoughts and his family. Again, congratulations to all the winners at the Chamber of Commerce Dinner. It was quite an undertaking for the staff at Greystone to be able to carry out such a largely attended, very packed house that evening. And I think, at least from my perspective, they did an excellent job, so well done. And I know I had one more thing I wanted to say, but I can't remember, so we're good. I'm cutting it short.
Thank you. Mr. Malta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, prayers for the Fisher family, our thoughts and prayers definitely go out to them through this tough time. A note that I will be absent next meeting due to a work commitment. And as always, thank you all for coming. We do appreciate it, and thank you all for watching.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Yeah, I just wish the best for Matt and his family going through this. It was quite a shock to see, I mean, this guy's like works out every day, very healthy and takes care of himself, and so quite a surprise. And certainly wish them the best. On a more positive note, if you, whether you attend the chamber dinner or not, at the same location on April 3rd, the Counseling Center will be having a gala. Now, there will only be a few hundred people instead of 900 people, but they bring in some folks from Cleveland dueling pianos that are quite talented musicians. It's a, I really kind of poo-pooed it last year. I'm like, okay, I got to go, so I went. It was a ball. It was a lot of fun. The guys are talented, it's just a lot of fun. So it is April 3rd. If you're interested, you could see me or reach out to the Counseling Center, but it should be a good time if you're interested in something to do in Worcester. I think that was it.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor? Signify if you say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.